Like your forest out there, unfortunately, the only boundary we've got with you is on the top of Spurcross Ranch and you can't get there from here.
Right.
Road washed out. And Mr. Harrow, appreciate your, where did he go?
Please.
There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to take a look at Agenda Item Number Four, Council's Consideration Possible Approval of Resolution Number R 2019-14, Resolution, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Cave Creek, Miracupa County, Arizona, Clearing as the Public Record of Certain Document and Filed with the Town Clerk and Entitled Resolution to Establish the Town of Cave Creek as a Certified International Dark Skies Association IDA Community. Now, this is, I put this on the agenda, it was brought to me by Mr. Arlen and, oh, for crying out loud.
Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, thank you. Bob, I don't know what happened to me there.
Mr. Robert Hughes.
I had, I had a, 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 a.
Rainwater.
Well, yeah, that happens. Anyway, so, Mr. Cosman, looks like you're back here to bail me out, would you please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. A few months ago, I met with Bruce Arlen and Bob Hughes to discuss the lighting sections of the zoning ordinance and also their desire to work with the International Dark Sky Association to have the town basically be recognized as a, as an IDA dark sky community. We hosted Dr. John Barrentine on, was that July 21st?
Twenty-two.
Mr. Hughes, Mr. Arlen, Dr. Barrentine and myself did, met here at Town Hall Sunday evening, took a tour of town, or the town in general, from different vantage points and really, I had a level of, of pride from that meeting because I, I thought maybe we, we might not be as compliant as, as some might think, but in actuality, you could really see the, the boundaries of, of the town limits as evidenced through outdoor lighting. You can really see where Phoenix ends and Cave Creek begins, where Scottsdale and Carefree end and where Cave Creek begins. So there's a level of pride I, I had, at least, from that meeting going around the town. Dr. Barrentine had a few criticisms of the zoning ordinance in that we use kind of outdated language such as watts and voltage and things like that that are in our zoning ordinance that are really outdated, especially with the advance in technology of LED and different sources of illumination. His recommendation is that we strike those outdated terms, replace everything with lumens because that's really how lighting is, is measured. The other, the other concern he had, or the other, the other recommendation he made was to put a lumen cap on all properties and it could be as simple as if you have five acres, you're allowed this many lumens, if you have one acre, you're allowed this many lumens, it's based on the size of the property. What we have uniquely in Cave Creek is really, the average lot size is over two acres and in those zoning districts, the minimum required setbacks are 60 feet, front and rear, and 30 feet on the sides for all structures. And since typically, outdoor lighting is used on structures and mounted on structures, we have a 10-foot maximum mounting height for outdoor lighting. Lighting is required to be shielded and cast downward. So what we found, kind of driving through residential areas, was really no, no light trespass, you know, foot candles at the property line was very low because of those setbacks. Trying to think what else I can discuss. Obviously, the town doesn't have any streetlights, so that, that got us a gold star from Dr. Barrentine. He, he actually compared us to Fountain Hills and said we were in better shape than Fountain Hills, which is currently an IDA community as far as being dark. That's really, in terms of comparison, we looked at commercial properties such as the Walmart site, the Starbucks site, and you're able to see with Fry's that development right across the street, the vast difference in, in how lighting is used and incorporated, everything down to their, to their signage at the Fry's. Look, the Fry's Center are, are ways of lighting signage that we wouldn't permit or allow by our ordinance. The maximum height of, of parking area lighting is also something where, where pretty aggressive and, and what we do allow, which is very little. Other communities, you can do 20 or 25-foot tall light poles in your parking area. We don't allow anything over 10 feet, except in the general commercial zones, we now allow 15 feet. But Walmart, if you've ever noticed, is, they're all, their light poles are 10 feet because they came in under the old ordinance. I can answer any questions the commission, or, excuse me, the council may have at this time. I'm still on Thursday.
I know. You're very good at commission.
Councilman McGuire?
When you went around with this person from the Dark Skies Association, did you find significant incidents in which we did not meet their expectations?
Um, Mayor, Members of Council, the, the biggest issue that I saw or that we discussed was really ambient and landscape lighting and, and really just its improper installation. A lot of people like to put their landscape lighting directly underneath the canopy of a tree and shoot it straight up, which technically is in violation of the ordinance. So from that aspect, really just better education to, to folks that are thinking of using, utilizing ambient lighting. Those types of fixtures should be placed five to eight feet away from the, from the tree or cactus and, and directed back at it so that there's less than a 90-degree angle and tilt in the light.
My purpose may not be clear. If we look at the criteria that are used by the Dark Skies Association, do we have situations in which our ordinances are inadequate or where there are significant violations that are not violations of our ordinances?
I'm, I'm not quite sure I follow, maybe.
Our ordinances will cover many things. We know we have, we have good lighting ordinances and you've talked about.
Yes, in some cases even more restrictive than what IDA would, would have us do.
Right, right. Were there places that you saw that we would not meet the IDA standards because it's not covered in our ordinances?
Really, the, the, the big issue would be getting the non-compliant places into compliance. The IDA requires it within 10 years that they, that we have, or show them that we have 100% compliance within the town. I had gotten the impression that the town had to come into compliance within a year of, of the IDA affiliation. It's actually five years that the town would have to bring all of its town-owned properties into compliance. There are cases in which there are other agencies that require lighting and security of publicly owned properties, so we would have to get waivers in those cases, but the, the hall would be getting 100% compliance because that's, that's usually a difficult ask.
Thank you. Councilmember Clancy?
Can you answer another question based on coming into IDA standards? Does that supersede if you do become dark skies and take on these IDA standards, which Mr. Bernstein also stated that we already met or exceeded the IDA standards? Would their requirements supersede what we have? Would we lose the ability to manage ourselves with regards to lights 10 years from now?
What they're proposing we do is amend our zoning ordinance to bring in, bring it in line with what the IDA standards are. And they're actually in the process of revising their model lighting ordinance currently for some of the same reasons that he pointed out, we should be examining it as well, technological advances, changes in.
So it's just, it's just wording?
Correct.
Or technology itself from the standpoint of a, a light being different today than it was 10 years ago?
That is correct.
And the way in which it distributes light?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
In, in looking at the requirements to meet the IDA standards, it looked to me like there was a lot of reporting, a lot of oversight, a lot of other activities that would consume staff time, town staff time. Have any idea how much time it would require to actually implement this?
I'll, I do not, but I, I would assume there would be considerable amount of work to, to address the, the concerns of the IDA, to update our ordinance.
Okay, because I noticed that, that there was constant reporting. Every year, there has to be certain reports that are done and there's a, a lot of oversight from external sources, IDA. I was just wondering how much of an impact that would have on, on town staff to be able to do it. You know, I, I have a belief that when you utilize town staff, you really ought to get some tangible benefits out of it. And I don't believe that you're going to get darker skies by doing this. I unfortunately live near Phoenix, so I'm never going to get dark skies.
Pardon?
Well, I did ask a question.
You did ask a question, okay. Councilman McGuire?
If, if we were to adopt the, the dark skies, would IDA have a role in coming in and saying, in enforcement? And I'm thinking now, we have the so-called complaint-driven zoning. Clearly, if it's a matter of health, safety and welfare, there is an active part taken by the town. If it's not a matter of health, safety and welfare, then it depends upon reporting by individuals. Would the town be required to do more policing as a result of adopting the IDA standards?
Councilman McGuire, yes.
I thought I asked that question.
Any other questions? All right, let's, let's see where we're at here. All right, there's public comment on this.
Bruce Arlen?
Thank you. So, I'm getting a funny feeling tonight. Getting a funny feeling tonight about the exchange that just took place. Very interesting to me. I didn't come here to be combative at all, I came here to be as the friendliest guy in the world. I have a speech. I got everything laid out now. How many here watched the video of the council people who did not attend the event? Could you please indicate it? Would you indicate? You did not?
I watched it.
You watched it. You watched it. I know you were there, Mayor, because you spoke in favor of the non-binding resolution this evening. In fact, you put it up. You were there, Mrs. Roye. You were there, Bob Morris. You were out of town, Mr. McGuire.
I did listen.
David Smith was there. Things were very, very clear. The enforcement is very thin. This is self-compliance through education, you know, like globe chamomile and doing the right thing. We are already a dark sky, I, I'm not even looking at my notes, we're already a dark sky community sentimentally. In fact, the last general plan that was put up, the foreword was distinctly, which was written by Carrie Smith, speaks of us as a dark sky community. We want to be a dark sky community. The pioneers of this town wrote codes, statutes that were indicating a dark skies direction, although it wasn't dialed in deeply. We're kind of a dark skies town right now. However, John, Dr. John Barrentine, who's a, an astronomer of the IDA, including Dr. Jeffrey Hall, the Director of the Lowell Observatory, both agree that our codes, our ordinance and our codes is not exactly as just indicated. He wrote a non-published rebuttal to a memorandum, I hate to bring this up because it's combative. It's very combative and I don't want to be combative. Our planning director wrote a memorandum that was admittedly somewhat inaccurate. He, he talked to John Barrentine, I hate to bring this up, I am being combative, look at this. Well, what are we going to do? Let it go? No.
Three minutes?
No, no, I have a presentation that was already, I have a longer presentation. Thank you. See what I mean? So, Dr. John Barrentine spoke, I talked to Luke and we had a, a miss, not a misunderstanding, we remembered differently our two hours together driving around in the town with Dr. John Barrentine. He remembered differently, so did Bob Hughes, my partner in this organization. John Barrentine, on Luke's request, spoke with Luke. Luke then okayed Dr. John Barrentine to make a new, a revision to his memorandum, which says things that are differently. It was now sent to our town manager, it was not published and then re-given to you. Why I do not know. Why don't you have it in your hands? We're now talking about a memorandum that's already been revised. It's already been revised. And now I'm standing here defending what I know to be the truth. And the truth is, we will have to do some more lan, we're not as good as, as Fountain Hills, we're better than a lot of communities, but we're at a starting point. We will have to revise our ordinance. We will. It's not a big deal. Why? For free, the IDA, for free, will give us consulting of the language, the same ordinances that have been adopted and are in use right now, very effectively, in Flagstaff, Sedona, Fountain Hills, in Arizona. Say, we want to become the 23rd international dark sky community in the world. It's a big deal, actually, to be that. We are doing great in this town now, but we need to do better. This is the point. We need to lock it in, better language into the, on the books, so that when we grow, and we're growing, the whole valley's grow, everything is growing, you know? Are we going to kill the, the brightness coming from the metropolis? Of course not. But we are going to mitigate it from our little island right here. We're going to do better here. We're already an island. You know, I apologize to you, I apologize to you, Luke, I do. And I'm really sorry that I've had to come on strong like this. I know that tonight, we will have one oppositional speaker, a friend of mine, actually. He's a friend of mine, but, you know, people work behind the scenes, your questions, all this kind of stuff. How many people are here for dark skies?
Yeah.
There's a lot more that didn't show up tonight.
Yes.
A hell of a lot more. And I'm actually, I'm a little pissed. Can you tell? I don't want to be sandbagged here. It's not right. So I came to be as friendly as could be and, look, I'm riled up. You got me riled, folks, because we had 150, standing room only, July 22nd, and a very enthusiastic crowd, a lot more than that, who didn't show up. We had letters of praise to you guys, I know that because I was CC'd those letters, a letter of support. So what's going on? Why, why the questions? Every one of them were insidious, like, no, the staff, the staff, they're here to work. And for free, the IDA will supply all the language, we will tweak it to the Cave Creek particular identity. You don't have to work hard. As far as follow-up, yes, the program is, once a year, we do a self-audit and we submit it. So what? A self-audit. Big deal. We're a dark sky place anyway. You want to be like Phoenix? You want to be like those guys and have crappy, you know, future of lightning ordinance? I'm sorry for saying crappy on video. But, you know, my, my point is this, failure of imagination kills, let's have a little imagination, let's get together, let's unify, let's be together, let's be a real dark skies community, if that's okay with you. Anyway, I didn't even say any of the things I wanted to say. I can't believe it. None of the things. And I, I'm just, darn it, guys. I'm asking for a unanimous vote yes tonight.
Yes.
I'm asking for a unanimous vote yes.
Yes!
It's a non, it's a non-binding resolution. No commitment but to join together, to figure it out and to move forward. Can we do that? Non-binding. This was submitted on May 31st, May 31st, two and three-quarters months ago. I can't believe I said all this stuff. I like all of you, I like everybody here, but don't, don't do this. Don't get weird, just, you know? It's non-binding. The real deal is later when you try to kill it. Then we'll fight you hard. Okay? I mean, I'm dead serious. Thank you. Oh, yeah, excuse me, one last thing, there are benefits, I'll make it so fast. Benefits. Benefits. Spend some time writing this darn thing. The benefits to the community are many, starting with the one we deal with daily, our quality of life, including the quality for the animals, domestic and wild. We will also save on electricity. It's been proven that dark sky lighting improves safety and visibility by cutting down on glare. This makes business signage at night more visible. More visible. Okay? We also believe that becoming a designated dark sky community will help Cave Creek businesses attract more business, more visitors. We will have status. 23rd dark sky community in the world? Are you kidding? People will be lining up to come here from Copenhagen, I don't know. People can hike and ride horses by day and stargaze and have a beer by night. That's it.
Robert Merrick Pierce?
Good evening, Mayor Bunch, Members of the Council. It's my first time ever in this room and it's, it's a joy to be here and it's been very educational to listen to the prior speakers. My name's Merrick Pierce, I reside in Fairbanks, Alaska. Obviously, I'm a little far south right now, but I've, I've been very, very lucky in my life. I've been able to travel the world and photograph the night sky in the southern hemisphere, the northern hemisphere. I asked the clerks tonight, Jane and Brian were very helpful to queue up a few of the pictures I was able to cobble together today to speak tonight and just kind of show you because seeing is believing, you get to see what the night sky looks like. That's a, a little bit of light pollution, but that's Mother Nature's light pollution up in Alaska, that's in Denali National Park. Believe it or not, we actually lose the aurora in major Alaska cities because of light pollution. We've got this incredible resource, people come from around the world sometimes to visit Alaska or Norway to see the northern lights, but we, we sometimes lose the northern lights because of light pollution in places like Anchorage and North Pole and Fairbanks. This is a picture, I'll tell you quickly, this is the Ruth Glacier next to Denali, Mount Denali in Alaska. You see the light pollution, Mother Nature's light pollution encroaching on the star trails, but that's good light pollution from where I stand. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of the night, the night sky again on the Ruth Glacier with a little bit of hint of the aurora encroaching into the Milky Way Galaxy that you see there. Next slide. The coldest night of my life, 20 below, couldn't get warm, but it was worth it. You get to see things like the night sky. One thing that helps when you're, when you're photographing the night sky is the ability to be at a high altitude because the stars are much more visible at the high altitudes. You see that if you go to the observatories on Mauna Kea on the big island in Hawaii, it's a dark sky community and you just see phenomenal, phenomenal stars. Next slide? I guess that's it.
That's a real dark sky.
Yeah. Dark skies. So, so I'll wrap up, I'll be very brief. And I, just to say, that slide right there, that's Porcupine Flat Rocket Research Range, that's north of Fairbanks. We work with NASA and physicists from around the world and what you're seeing is real science happening. Scientists need dark skies for some of the work that they do. In this slide, you're seeing a rocket launch to send a sounding rocket payload up into the aurora, study the aurora and understand how it works. So just one, one little bit of science that I'd share with you. I'd like to do a non-scientific survey, just so it's clear to everybody in the council and the mayor, how many people in the room, by show of hands, support the dark skies initiative? Wow. Thank you very much. So I'll, I'll wrap up on that note. I, I would just say that the last thing, you're going to have to expand this effort into surrounding communities. You've raised the point, Phoenix is this glowing mess and, you know, I photographed up in the tunnel forest and you get that glow coming in from Phoenix, but you can set the standard. You know, we used to have a time in this country where our rivers caught fire, but we did something about that pollution and now most of our rivers are in pretty good shape. I think if you start by trying to set the standard and try to get other communities coming with you, that'll be a, a positive start. And I think at some point, Mr. Smith, you'll, you'll, Councilman Smith, you'll have an ordinance before you and I assume that'll have a fiscal note and then you can kind of work your way through whatever the fiscal cost might be to enforce a new, and maybe slightly improved or different ordinance. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Bob Hughes?
Mayor and Council, I'm Bob Hughes, Cave Creek resident for about 25 years now. And the subject of dark skies has been a topic here in Cave Creek for many, many years, as long as I've been here. And about six months ago, Marshall Stein gave me a phone call and asked me to meet with him and Bruce Arlen. He introduced me to Bruce Arlen because we had a common interest in dark skies and outdoor lighting. So during that meeting, the marshal asked if we would put together an educational program for the town. And we said, sure. Be a lot of fun, be a lot of work. It turned out, it was a lot of fun and a lot of work. Subsequent to that meeting, Bruce and I attended a dark spot, dark sky expo at Fountain Hills. And there we met Dr. Jeff Hall from the Lowell Observatory and also Dr. John Barrentine from the International Dark Sky Association and talked to them about possibly working with us for a presentation for the town. And they agreed and they were very enthusiastic about it. Subsequent to the night tour that Bruce and I took of the town of Fountain Hills, we were very impressed with the lighting and the impact of the dark sky certification that Fountain Hills has. And from that meeting and from that tour that we took, we decided to start the Cave Creek Dark Sky Initiative. And from there, we decided to go ahead and put on a presentation, which we did on July 22nd, which was attended by about 150 local residents here in town, which was well-received. And we got a lot of really good, positive comments because of that presentation that was put on where Dr. Barrentine and Dr. Hill put on a good presentation about dark sky and what the advantages were. and what the advantages were. So from that, from that point, for the town to become certified, it's going to require some changes to the current zoning and will require participation by the town residents, by the town management, and by the town business corps. And it will, of course, take quite a bit of time. So tonight, I'm asking the town council to approve the resolution that is before you in item number four. And from my personal perspective, of course, I have an ulterior motive, being an astrophotographer and having a local observatory where I take deep sky images at night. Dark skies mean an awful lot in terms of image quality. And 25 years ago, when I moved here, I could see the Milky Way quite easily. Today, it's almost impossible to see it because of the encroachment from Scottsdale and Phoenix. And of course, the light, the ambient light that is here in Cave Creek. The combination of all that has really muddied out the night sky. So passing this resolution tonight will give the town some direction. And Bruce and I are positioned so that we will work with the town, work with Luke to try to modify the town zoning, along with, of course, input from the International Dark Sky Association. So with that, thank you for your time, and please pass the resolution.
Good evening, council, mayor. Kacha Kinsel, 412-00, North Echo Canyon Drive, right up near where Bob Hughes lives. And I appreciate the dark sky. I charge you to do what is good for Cave Creek and not knock it down. We have ordinances on the books, but we have no code enforcement.
Bingo.
Per the town manager, we have no code enforcement. Even though it is the town marshal's job, per code, I could cite it, but that is his job as code enforcement. Sorry there, Mr. Marshall. That whole issue is broken. And you, as council, are perpetuating that brokenness. I don't know why that is. I could go on about how I've come up here about the automotive repair shop in my neighborhood, DR 190, where it's not allowed. But do not lay the blame on staff to have to enforce code. The lighting ordinances are on the books. I should have brought a copy and made one for you, but you probably all know that. It's not going to take extra time from the town staff. You know, you could hire a citizen to do something like handout what code is. Many people will come here and they don't build a home, and they buy a home already. And they don't know that they couldn't, can't put in Sago palms, like the neighbor just south of me. They don't know that they can't have lighting, and they put in, you know, whole new lighting, landscape lighting. So pass the resolution. It's not going to be an overnight thing. It's going to be, what, five years? Five to 10 years, okay? And with an education, education going out, oh, in the water bowls, maybe? Wouldn't that be good? People would be, would turn to their neighbors and say, hey, can I fix that light that's up there that is on all night? Anyway, fix it, council. Don't be against it.
My name is Yolanda Grell. I live at 39429 North 67th Place in Cave Creek. I've lived in Cave Creek since 1993 with my husband and family. Hello, council, mayor, everybody else and people. Yay. Okay. I went to the town, or I went to the meeting at the library, and it was fantastic. I have to tell you that the energy in the room was second to none about the dark skies. I recently took a trip with my daughter to chase the dark skies because I wasn't able. I got a new camera, and I wasn't able to take the pictures I wanted to take in my own backyard, because my neighbors had put landscape lighting. So I went to Jasper in Canada, because they're a dark skies community, and it's nothing like what you imagine it to be. It wasn't dark. It was just a way for you to be able to see the sky while your walking paths and everything were really lit. That point was addressed in the meeting about safety, because I was kind of panicked that, oh my God, we're going to get rid of all the lighting on our paths and things like that. It's nothing like that. And the problem is that people don't understand what the certification is and what it is, like what it would be and it would mean to our town. I was so excited when the gentleman from IDA said that we were almost, I don't know, 90-some percent of the way there. And I believe that to be true. So in order to have a conversation about this, you know, with my neighbors, I went up to them, because their landscape lighting is actually quite atrocious. We call it the resort, because there's a glow that you can see when you never used to be able to see it. And in the bottom of my photographs, it's literally a dome of craziness. And I walked up to them, not expecting a fight, but I was so excited, because they said they bought a telescope for their son. And I'm thinking, oh my God, I just have to educate you, and now the town is going to help me do this. So it's not going to be a fight. People really want to see the stars. I want to preserve the stars for my grandchild. I want to be able to do something that matters. I want to inspire Phoenix, believe it or not. I think we can be that. And after the meeting, a friend of mine said that she was going to go talk to the mayor of Carefree, so that they could become dark skies before we do. And I'm like, uh-uh. We're really going to go fast on this. So if nothing else, can we just at least agree to move forward and attempt to become something that is a little bit better than what we have right now? And it's not that much of a difference. The guy that explained all of this, I wish I remember his name, was amazing, because he talked about lighting and about lumens and about the quality of the light bulbs and things. It was such an exciting experience to understand, that this wasn't like going to be a bunch of rules that are rammed down our throats as citizens. It was really going to be a movement towards caring about something that's a little bit bigger. So my hope is that you will just care enough to support a bunch of citizens that really want to have something magical happen for us in Cave Creek, and then maybe someone will buy a plane ticket, the way I did, to go to Jasper, so they can take photos here in Cave Creek of the dark skies. And I think that would be a benefit to the town and all of us. Thank you for listening.
Is that in order?
Can Maguire ask her a question?
Yeah. Thank you for speaking to your neighbor. That's really a great way to go about it.
Not a question.
My question...
I enjoyed speaking to my neighbor.
Good. And my question for you is, what was the response of the neighbor? Did the neighbor realize that in order to make proper use of that telescope, the, her lighting, his lighting had to be changed?
They said they were sad they couldn't come to the meeting, and I thought that was a good start. And that was only the second conversation I'd had with my neighbor, because up to that point, the other neighbors were pissed off at that neighbor. And so the fact that I could go back to my other neighbors and say, guess what? They all have a telescope, and we should have a telescope party, creates a little bit of neighborhood thing. And I don't know if they're going to direct the light that they have on the Saguaro that points up in a different direction, but at least now we're talking. Instead of talking about each other, we're talking to each other. And I think that's amazing.
Are you aware of whether or not the light on their Saguaro is...
It's illegal. And unless we come here and complain to you, nobody from here will go and do something about it. And we, this is not the world I want to live in. I want to live in a world where I can go talk to them and say, you know what? This is an ordinance, and this, somebody could do something, but why don't you let us help you? And one thing at the presentation that was amazing was that the guy talked about security lighting, and security lighting that's on all the time does not deter crime as much as security lighting that actually is tweaked to work when there's an intruder. So the coyote's not an intruder. And the lights can be set in such a way that only when a human form walks by will the light go on. And police who are in the area are actually trained to know that if that security light goes on, you better pay attention, because the security light that's on all the time doesn't make any difference. So I memorized what the guy said, because I'm like, I'm going to have conversations over barbecue. Like, you know, the first, I remember this. I don't know if you guys know Jim and Joe Hurd. When we moved to Cave Creek, our backyard washed into their backyard. So Joe Hurd comes over, knocks on the door and says, you guys like barbecue chicken? We're like, yeah. And he's like, why don't you come over? I'm going to make you barbecue chicken, and I'm going to tell you how to keep your house from falling onto my house. Best friendship ever. Like, this is Cave Creek, you know? And he didn't need to come to the town to ask you, to ask me, to stop my gravel from killing his landscaping. He helped me terrace. He helped me figure out who to call in town. And I'm, I'm happy to pay it forward. I mean, so for me, it's like, don't be afraid. Just don't be afraid. And there's enough of us that care about this. We will help you guys do your paperwork, if there's paperwork to be done.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Maron. I live at 8030 Golden Spur in Carefree, your neighbor. Hey, I'm the place that started this whole area. My house is the oldest in this area. Maybe 1870. Guess.
Well, you look young for that age.
Yeah. But I'm here to talk about dark skies, and clearly, you're beginning to realize that Cave Creek and Carefree are astronomical communities. People have spent good money to move out here into dark areas where they build their observatories. How many of you have observatories and telescopes? Yes. A good number. And as president of the Phoenix Astronomical Society, we bring the public from Phoenix, I mean Chandler, Apache Junction, here to Cave Creek at the college on the, and we show the night sky once a month. But I have more interesting news. You're about to become a major astronomical spot in the world. I've discovered a 10-mile-wide crater. So in Cave Creek, just north of here, this is much bigger than the one in Meteor Crater. ASU and the USGS are waiting for cooler weather to come out here. Oy, I'm ready now. So this hasn't been confirmed, but very likely, this will become one of the major spots, tourist spots of the world. Look what Meteor Crater does in tourism. And it would be a good idea to be very astronomically friendly, because you're going to become one of the major sites of the world if this is confirmed. So you're going to have a lot more tourism coming in.
And a lot more lights.
Might as well be as friendly to the astronomy that is in the area as possible. We're going to influence you in ways you don't know about yet. And I just want to say, I think the community stands behind us in the astronomy, because we all appreciate the dark skies. It's very hard to find in the nation right now. And I know these guys in the dark sky. You have the easiest job of anyone in the entire world for certifying. They said, you guys are almost there. I'd say 99%. Just change a few words in your ordinances, and you will be there. The amount of work is minimal. And this is voluntary. Believe me, these guys don't have time to go around enforcing it. This is just an idea to improve the world and the neighborhood. So let's do our part to improve our part of the world and make it better for everyone to enjoy. Chandler, Apache Junction, and everyone else who comes up here. So let's save our night skies.